I just want to say hi to everybody. Thank you for our current city councilors at large, ward councilors, candidates, community members, community organizers. I really appreciate you guys being here today. This is a very important forum for me and our city. The political times that we're in right now are very scary times, but I think education is really, really important. So if we can educate our community, educate ourselves on what we can do and what we can control, I think that's very important. This is just going to be a very casual forum. We have our Ward Five candidates. We have Augustina. We have Cardelis Paez. We have Josh Polansky. And we have Liliana Patino. We also have a special performer, Michelle La Poetica, the first Lynn poet. So the purpose of this event is just for us to get to know our Ward Five candidates, ask them some questions, get some answers from them, some information from them. Voice your concerns in a respectful manner. Voice some suggestions that you would like to see changed in Ward Five or some things that you see are going well. And this event was put on by not only myself, but also the Lynn Music Foundation, who is ran by Edwin Cabrera, who I actually went to middle school with in elementary. And also by the New Lynn Coalition, so give them a round of applause. At this time, I'm going to call them up so they can say a few words.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to the Neil Rantul Vault Theater. I'm Edwin Cabrera, Executive Director of the Lynn Music Foundation. We operate our nonprofit out of this space here. We do all sorts of community events. We're holding this event here tonight in partnership with New Lynn Coalition. We also have some exciting events I want to let you guys know about. Tomorrow, if you guys aren't doing anything, 7:00, we have a film screening as part of our civil society screening, a film called "The Beautiful Country." Check out the trailer if you haven't heard of it. It's a free screening, so tomorrow at 7:00 PM, come on back and enjoy a film with us. We also have our monthly comedy shows that happens. Thanks to Stand Up Stick Up, Stephen Foley. Next Thursday, August 26th, I believe, August 28th, is our stand-up comedy show. Again, that's 7:00, doors open, 7:30 doors open. Janet McNamara is a headliner, she's very funny, come to that. And then also, we have back-to-school backpack drive for the kids. And this is happening during Final Fridays, Lynn Museums Final Friday, happening at Frederick Douglass Park from 6:00 to 9:00. So come down, there's going to be a dance battle happening, but also we'll be giving away backpacks and school supplies for the youth. There's a lot more stuff that we do. You can check out lynnmusic.org to find out more and help support. I want to also pass it on to New Lynn Coalition.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Smukala. I am a resident of Lynn, been living in Lynn since I came to this country. I made it my home. I am a president of the New Lynn Coalition, and I'm so involved in other organizations here in Lynn. So because this is one Lynn, not two Lynn. We are the New Lynn Coalition. The New Lynn Coalition is made up with community, faith, and labor organization. We work to organize and empower the working-class people. So we are 17 or 18 organization members that belong to the New Lynn Coalition. There you go, we have these slides. So we don't care what you speak as a language. We don't care what color your skin is. We don't care anything. We're just here for one Lynn, not two Lynn. So these are some of the programs that we're doing. We're doing Lynn Community Outreach Program, which is night school. Those schools provide jobs for our community member, the E-Team machinist, up at LinTech. And then we also provide food to families in need in this conjuncture. So these are some of the events that we do. We march for, we march for, for working-class people. We march for, like I said, we do the food, we fight the food insecurity and food. We deliver food to families in need at this time. And then we also do the march for the working-class people. May Day, May 1st, we all come together in our city and our community to make our demand for good work environment and dignity and respectful order. We also march for immigration, defend our democracy, defend our community, keep ICE out of the community. So these are just some of the things that we do as New Lynn Coalition together. And if you want to get involved, this is our contact number. We're looking for volunteers, we're looking for people to work together with. And this is the contact number, and I want to thank you all for being here.
So I'm going to pass the mic back to Daphne. But before I do, guys, after the forum, after our candidate forum, stick around. We have a special performance by a wonderful artist. Actually, walked in the door over there, Sean McCarthy is going to be performing for us tonight. So stick around for a wonderful performance to close us out. Pass it back to Daphne.
Well, thank you, guys. Now, I'm going to be presenting Michelle La Poetica.
How's everybody doing? Okay, so I want to say thank you for being here. It's very important that you're here because it starts small. It starts at a city level, at a local level. If we did our job at a local level, we wouldn't be dealing with what we're dealing with on a federal level right now. So it's very important that you're here, that you participate, that you tell your people to come to these things, that you tell your people to register to vote, that you tell your people to vote, to participate, because we're literally dying for lack of participation. Because the people that are participating are only the people that want to do harm, that want to separate and divide, that want to get rid of people that look and think like us. So if you don't participate in these things, and you don't tell your people and bring them, bring them, pull them by the arm if you have to, because we are dying for lack of participation, for lack of inclusion, for lack of equity, for lack of accessibility. We are literally perishing for lack of light and for lack of love. And if we don't do anything about that, we are going to have to get our ticket back home, even if home is something that we are unknown and unfamiliar to. Because it's going to get really ugly. We don't get working if we don't get united, if we don't do what we have to do here first. Here first. So everybody here has a dream, right? I have a wish. Would you like to know what my wish is? So this wish was born on a May 1st about 15 years ago. The first time the immigrants in this country got so mad that they said, "You know what? They don't want us here so bad? Fine, we're not going to work." See how that feels? And for the first time, immigrants in this country came together and let the country feel the impact of what happens when we stay home. So on that day, I was planning on staying home too. But my boss, knowing me very well, saw the look on my face, said, "Uh-uh, if you don't come to work tomorrow, I'm going to fire you." Because you were born here, just like me. So that's nothing to do with you. So I had to come to work the next day because I had kids to support, you know, rent to pay. But I wrote this poem on the clock while I was working. And I printed it on his printer and I used it. Because I had a wish. I wish more people would take off that comfortable mask called patriotism and realize that, like it or not, we are all products of the infamous melting pot that bruised the American dream to a dim flame, cut into the guys apart by those that seek to destroy us right before it comes to a boil. Thus, never allowing it to cook properly. And then they're going to have the nerve to tell me where my allegiance lies? And I'm not going to cry, rant, or rave. I'll find some kind of acceptance in being an indentured slave, living from paycheck to paycheck, never being able to call anything mine. And at the end of the day, no matter how hard I work or try, Uncle Sam is the only one eating the quote-unquote peace of the American pie and its dream filling. Tell me how fitting it is that America finds a way to meet defeat the world while the ones that live here are left to die homeless and penniless because of the budget cuts and the downsizing? We're known to feed the bellies of the monsters before the uprising and then be given the ticket to fly their plane and swoop down to blow up the hand that feeds them? I find it ironic and even more so pathetic that I can't get help to put my voice through private schools, but they gladly provide the tools to educate those that want to cause harm. And then they want to pass laws to chase away the only workers on the farm. And they don't yield but the ones in the field that work to provide a weak meal to those they left behind. Yet they find it just and quite fine that the murder of a child gets three meals a day. Free housing, health insurance, and recreational food my pay. But the hard-working misereals can't stay? And they're forced to live in fear day by day because they don't bear that green ticket in their pocket to the all-you-can-eat buffet of the American green apple pie that they can't eat? Yes, sir, it's a hell of a lot easier to talk it without putting on those worn-out shoes and trying to walk it with the weight of supporting a family that you haven't seen in years on your back? All of this because you lack that green card that you can swipe through an AT&amp;T scanner here and tell you, "Yes, you can go see your loved ones," and then come back to this household when you're done and return to the daily grind? Besides feeling unkind, doesn't your conscience feel a little off-wack? As you sit there on your high horse and you tell me to go back to where I came from? I was born right here, you insignificant crumb. And if you look back through the years, you'll see the truth in your family tree and, oh, say, you will see someone, two or three from your family cross these borders by land or sea. It doesn't matter if their names are dotted down in a log at Ellis Island, Ashton Plymouth Rocky fool, none of us are 100%. It's a catch-22, stitched right into your red, white, and blues. Now, I'm going to smile as I remember that to Ingrid, because the only truth is that American equals immigrant. And for those of you that were born here, that think that everything that's going on with ICE, immigration, Trump, and all of that, you think that that does not affect you because you don't have some melanin, because you don't love the person that you're not supposed to be loving, or anything like that, you're wrong. Ladies, black or white, pink or yellow, they're coming for your right to vote. They already took your rights to your body. They're coming for your vote next, and then they're coming for your voice. It doesn't matter who you lay down with at night. They're coming for you, ladies. People of color, people that weren't born here, they're coming for you too. People that think that everybody should be in love and loving each other and happy and sitting in a room like this, no matter where you come from, what you speak, where you were born, people that think like you are also on the target list. People that think like us, look like us, live like us are on a list somewhere. Because we are part of their problem. Because we love, because we exist in love. We exist in a community where we love everybody, no matter where they come from. And we are a threat to the general process and systems in place right now. So understand the power that it has. As you sit here in these seats to listen to four people that want your votes, four people that are going to give you today reasons to vote for them, and when you leave here with your candidate in mind, whoever he or she may be, you need to leave here and talk about it to everybody you know. Because we are going to lose this war. There's a war going on out there. And we're going to lose this war if we don't pull it together. If we don't come together, it's going to happen. So leave here with a decision. Leave here with a thought and talk about it.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I loved that. Thank you. And thank you for everybody that's trickling in. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. So I know some people are familiar with what the city council does. I'm just going to do like a brief overview. So why does it matter and why vote? What is the city council? The city council is made is a body of 11 elected officials who govern the city along with the mayor. There are seven ward councilors elected by the different people in the different wards. There's four at-large councilors that are elected citywide. So everybody in the city votes for the at-large. And then if you live in a specific ward, you vote for that ward. So Ward 1, Ward 5, Ward 6, et cetera. And elections for city council are every two years. And they don't have a term limit, so that means that they can keep getting voted back in, which is why we have people in some offices who are, you know. The council, along with the mayor, collectively make important decisions about the policies, practices, and priorities of the city within the limits of the state laws. What does the city council do? What are their powers and responsibilities? So if you compare the mayor to like the president of the city, the city council will be like Congress. They create and vote on local policies. They have power to influence and approve or not approve the city budget yearly. And they represent, respond to, and serve their constituents and residents. And ward councilors, there's seven total. They're elected by residents in their ward and are specifically responsible for representing them. So like I said, each ward has a specific counselor. And then the at-large, they represent the whole city. But they all have the same voting power. So this is a map of the city and the wards broken up to each ward and each precinct. If I was you guys, I would definitely take a look at this on your own as well so you could get familiar with it. Can you guys raise your hands so I can see how many people are like actually live in Ward 5 or know which ward they live in? Okay, cool. Okay, thank you. And why should we care and why should we vote? Because I know a lot of people have like concerns. They don't think it matters. They don't think the position is important. A lot of people think about federal, they always think about presidential elections. The city council makes decisions that impact all of us directly and determine the priorities of the city. What kind of city do we want to be? What do we want to prioritize? So they decide on the cost and quality of housing, community safety, arts, jobs, different things like that. And this is an example of something that went through the city council, the South Harbor tax break of 2023. Despite community opposition, city council voted 10 to 1 to approve $45 million tax break for a development on Linway of 850 apartments with only 10%, which is 85 affordable units. That's still out of reach for most of the Lynn renters. So if you think about who was on the council in 2023 and you think about who's on the ballot in 2025, you know what to do. Also, tenant rights in 2024. City council voted unanimously to approve a housing stability ordinance that requires landlords to provide their tenants with a standard info packet, informing them of their rights as renters and listing helpful resources to address unjust practices by landlords and other issues they may face. And then if only the same people continue to vote in every election and pay attention to city politics, those voters will be the only people who city officials are directly accountable to, and others will continue to go unheard. Also, sometimes it's difficult for people to vote, of course. And I know some people don't prioritize voting, especially in this area. You see a lot of people who are homeless. I think they're not really thinking about voting. They think about where their next meal is going to come from, where they're going to sleep that night. And I know a lot of people are discouraged. You know, you keep voting for people, and they say they're going to do stuff. And it just seems like, you know, what you ask for or what you're expecting never gets done once they're in office. It's like the door is closed. In 2021, only 23% of registered voters in Lynn voted in the general election, and only 17% in Ward 5. So if you put that into perspective, that doesn't mean that like everybody who was registered to vote voted. That means that out of all the people who were registered to vote, only 23% voted. And the preliminary 15% voted, 11% voted in Ward 5. So in conclusion, vote. You guys can scan the QR code. I'll probably leave this up for a little bit. If you want to register to vote and look up your ward, find out that information, and ask questions as well. Like, a lot of times, we love to complain when we get a president in office. We'll complain about what he's doing and how terrible he is. That's really not going to solve any issues because he's still going to be terrible the next day and the next day. Start getting informed, start finding out like, what's your ward? What's your precinct? Who's running in your ward? What are their views? What are they trying to do? And then look at who was on the council two years ago. What did they do? What didn't they do? What were they able to do? What did they support? What didn't they support? And that's going to help you determine like, you know, who you want to vote for, what person you want representing your ward, what person you want representing your city. So I think now we will move on to introducing the candidates. I'm going to let them introduce themselves because I think that they'll do a better job of introducing themselves. Thank you, Tenvir. So let's start with Augustina.
Hi, my name is Augustina Matos. Yo vivo en Lynn por 22 años. Tal y de estos años yo llevo en la comunidad.
All of these years I've been in this community, 15 years as a community activist. I developed myself as a community activist. And neighbor to neighbor. And from there, I've participated in a lot of organizations. Like New Lynn Coalition. Participé en la campaña del primer gobernador negro. I participated in the first black governor's race, which Deval Patrick. And he was elected. He was the first black governor of Massachusetts. And that has been my journey. And a community activist in the city of Lynn. 20 years of work as a volunteer. I've formed a base in this community. From that base, a lot of organizations have come to be. Like Lynn Worker Center, Lynn United for Change, New Lynn Coalition. It's a coalition of organizations. By means of this community work, I've participated in ECHO as well. Participating in different campaigns, like Medicaid PerCar. Medical campaigns, political campaigns, social campaigns. I haven't limited myself. By means of my activism, I have done a lot of things. Incredible things. We've won a lot of campaigns, a lot of victories. We have. We created the May 1st March, the Day of the Immigrant. And like that. This is how I've supported my community, Augustina Matos. A community activist. Passion for my community. And I've worked at federal, state, and local level with different politicians in different campaigns.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cardelis Paez, or as some folks have started calling me Cardi, Cardelis. Nice to meet you, see a lot of familiar faces. So I am a Lynn native, was born and raised here. Over the years, I've had wonderful experiences just getting to know people within the community, participate in a number of organizations throughout my upbringing. I think my parents were very big on, you know, we have to work a number of jobs, but we don't want you to just stay in the house. And we're very big advocates in making sure that me and my siblings were still seeking education activities, et cetera, regardless of our current conditions. And that was a very fulfilling experience for me and led me to a number of different opportunities once I had the opportunity to leave Lynn and go to school abroad. No, go to school in California. That led me to doing some interesting work abroad in economic development in Guatemala, but also learning about different cultures in Japan and eventually working on different social and environmental projects through some consulting work internationally. So right now, I have an opportunity to come back. And for the past three years, I've really enjoyed reconnecting with my community, learning about the different work that individuals are doing and different groups. And I think there's a lot of potential within this community and especially in a time where there's a number of new developments, there's a lot of progressive ideas. It's a good opportunity to take this and look at what our current legislation and leaders have been doing and improve on it, but also integrate the changing community demographics. And yes, so I'm here just to, one, meet a lot of you, but also learn about what you all want, desire, and how to implement that in a way that's more transparent, more accessible. And we have the systems to back that up as well.
Hi, everybody. My name is Josh Polansky. Appreciate you all being here tonight. I saw by the hands in the room earlier, most of you aren't even from Ward 5. That speaks to the character of Lynn. That speaks to the character of the room that you care that deeply. We here are all running for Ward 5 city council. And granted, the city councils will all work together. We've seen it currently, we've seen it in the past. But I very much appreciate everybody's interest in us collectively together. Thank you very much. As I said, my name is Josh Polansky, lifelong Lynn resident. I'm currently raising two kids here. My wife and I chose to make our home in Lynn after we get married. My children are in Lynn Classical High School and Breed Middle School, so I'm very invested in their education, in the education of our youth. I have run some youth programs in my neighborhood where I've grown up and where I live now in Pine Hill. For a long time, I ran Pine Hill Civic Association. We did a number of different programs and events for families, for children, all in the name of keeping kids active in a safe manner, active in a fun, friendly manner, giving children of the city, because children are one of our best resources in the city, and to give them the ability to have safe welcoming spaces to play, to grow, to learn, to want to do what I did. I want my kids to want to grow up here, go to college, come back home, and then make Lynn their home. Because I feel Lynn is the most tremendous city. I've been a lifelong Lynn defender. I've traveled all over the country through various work aspects. Everywhere I go, I've heard different things. Lynn's a very famous city, and I've heard good, I've heard bad. I'm always a lifelong Lynn defender, and it's people like us that are in this room who I'm talking about when I am a Lynn defender. It's places like Lynn Woods, places like Lynn Beach, places like Lynn Commons. It's events like this, it's events that we see all across the city. We've got a vibrant area, and we all need to utilize it as best we can. We are a very welcoming people, and I hope to help be a leader of the city. I hope that my impact can remain, can be a positive impact on each and every resident. I want to be a liaison to the residents of Ward 5 and the residents of the city in City Hall. I want to use all the resources available to me to be sure that every resident is heard, to be sure that every resident has a voice, and to be sure that every resident's needs are being met. Everybody has unique and individual needs. No matter where you live within the ward, no matter where you live within the city, that's your home. And your home is important to you. Your needs are important to you. Those needs are important to me as well. And if I have the opportunity and the pleasure of representing everybody in the city, I will do so with 100% of my heart and 100% of my effort every day for as long as I can. Thank you.
Well, good evening, winners knowches, and thank you so much for being here. So my name is Liliana Patino, and I was not born or raised here. I actually moved here at the age of 21 to be reunited with my mother, who was the first one who had the courage to leave and to change our life. So at the age of 21, I came to the United States with a bag full of dreams. And I am very proud to say that I pretty much had accomplished every single dream that I had. I learned English, I got married, I have two wonderful boys. I'm actually a grandmother, which is pretty cool. I went to school, and I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in counseling. And through my work, I had the blessing to have been serving the community in multiple ways. Because of my educational background, I have been able to be a clinician in multiple settings, from outpatient clinic, school departments. I had the honor to be the director for the Family Resource Center for many years, which I'm actually, I am still the director there. And the ability to touch lives is something that I take very seriously. In my work, I explain people how systems work, and I think that that gives me the ability to... and I think that that gives me the ability to change lives in a very possible manner. So being in the community is nothing new to me. I've been doing it for many, many years in multiple capacities. Currently, I serve as a senior director for Community Impact and Development for Elliot Community Human Services. So I oversee different departments that are community engaged. As I mentioned, I see the Family Resource Center. I see the RISE Project, which is a program for substance abuse prevention and gambling prevention. I oversee the CFC Program, which is a program for parents with children under six. And I was brought into the city through my agency to support the Calm Team. I think that many of you are very familiar with the Calm Team, so I had the experience to work with many of you, actually listening to you, trying to adjust, right? Some of the ideas that we all have together and come up with a plan. And I am very proud to say that we have them walking around with the bright orange shirts, definitely connecting families with services. I am part of the Advisory Council for Latino Empowerment for the Governor, and I am part of the Immigrant Advisory Council for the Attorney General. In addition to be part of the different boards for different organizations that include housing, mental health, and food resources. I do run a food pantry where we support 800 families a week, which is insane. And probably you have seen me all around the last days sharing backpacks with many families in the community. So that's kind of like what I do. I have an amazing team of 35 people, but I do work with multiple organizations. And I think that that is something very unique to what I do. My ability to work, navigate systems, connect people, and definitely to advocate to the needs of each individual. I think that due to my background and my working experience and my living experience, that gives me the ability to serve the community in a very unique way. I understand what is immigration. I do understand what it means to be brown. I do understand what it means to attend an ESL program. I understand what it means to complete a FAFSA when you don't know how to do it. I understand what it means when someone says you need to move out because your rent is going up. My family went through all of that. And I feel that it gives me the ability to support not only the people in my ward, but the people in the community of Lin. Ward Five affects everybody in Lin. So we're not talking about, as you said, we're not talking about two Lins. We're talking about one. So I want to make sure that I can be your voice and I can be the representative at City Hall fighting for the entire Lin. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that. So now we're going to move to the questions. You guys do have two minutes to answer each question. We do have Laura from Newlin Coalition keeping time, so she'll tell you when your time is up and how much time you have left. We're going to mix it up. So the first question is, can you tell us what you have done in the community or what relevant work organizing or volunteer experience would help you in this role? I'm going to start with Josh Polansky.
Thank you. So some of the things I've done in the community, I've talked about a little bit before. I was the president of Pine Hill Civic Association for a number of years, where I led that organization in Pine Hill. I was also part of the PTO for Soul Anderson Elementary School. My children were there. I've been a coach for Lin Youth Soccer, Lin Youth Hockey, Flag Football, and Pine Hill Little League Baseball. I was the treasurer for a long time at Pine Hill Little League. I was also the equipment manager for a while. And all of that work ties together with, again, the youth of the city. All that organizational work ties together with what I would do as ward counselor in community engagement, right? If we keep the community engaged, if we keep everybody's interests in mind, we'll have pride of community, we'll have a good sense of pride in community. And those organizational efforts that I had would lend itself to the ability to create monthly meetings, quarterly meetings, to create events, to help work with other organizations in the ward and throughout the city to continue to build up those type of events. I also feel like some of the work that I'd done previously in college, I was involved in student government. I was involved in Student Activities Board. I was involved in various media clubs. And through those activities and those clubs, I had worked with budgets in different roles. I had worked with organizing schedules in different roles. I had worked with organizing volunteers. And all of that tying together throughout the course of my life, I feel would lend itself to the ability to lead effectively as it relates to community activities.
Thank you for that. I'll give it to Agustina Matos.
Que no he hecho yo en la comunidad. He participado en esta comunidad.
What haven't I done in this community? I've participated in...
Creando organizaciones.
Creating organizations.
De trabajadores.
A volunteer organization of workers.
Coaliciones de trabajadores.
Coalitions of workers. I've participated in this community, being a member of the board of different organizations. I've been a delegate for the Democratic Party for many years.
He participado.
I have participated.
He hecho tantas cosas.
I've done so many things in this community. I've participated in creating groups, community groups.
De trabajadores.
Of workers.
Como el Lin Worker Center.
Like the Lin Worker Center. That's one example.
La Alianza Nacional de los Trabajadores de Lugar. Fui parte, fundadora de esa alianza.
National Alliance of the Workers. I was part of that alliance at a federal level, of that alliance. What have I done in this community?
Okay, too much.
I think I've done a lot.
Thank you. Since you're holding the mic, Cardelis, you can go. Thank you.
I guess, where do I start this conversation? So I guess I'll start in high school, Josh. So I've always definitely been a quieter person, but definitely have always enjoyed exploring new ideas. In high school, I created our environmental club and started working with outside partnerships, like the Food Project and other organizations. When I went to college, I decided that, yes, I like consulting, but all of these corporations also need help. So I got together with a few different professors, students, and decided that, yeah, we can work with these corporations. Got myself about six different clients who were all from all around the world, honestly, working with luxury fashion brands, et cetera, and worked with them on learning firsthand what was going on and delivering a good product. And I think that's translated throughout all of the work that I've been able to do in Lin since. I've been working with the Latino Support Network as we are developing a community development corporation, which is one of the only ones in Lin. So we are currently developing affordable housing and promoting some practices around just creating more opportunities for Lin residents. This has come along with also learning about some of those pitfalls about developing property within the community, particularly how difficult funding gaps can be, what those different roadblocks are. And I think there's a lot of tangible experience with how to navigate these resources and systems and advocate for other areas. I've also begun working within economic development groups, and now I have to stop talking.
Thank you for that. Liliana?
Sure. So I've definitely been connected not only to Elliot but to multiple community agencies in the community. So I think that my work has been related to, how can we create partnerships? That has been a significant part of my role. We have done brainstorm and very successful partnerships where we were able to bring additional resources, additional money and additional funding into the city. I was part of the creation of Calm. Not the creation, I don't want to say creation, let me retrain that. But definitely the final implementation of Calm, which I still supervise the two team members that are now employed. I think that I've been bringing a lot of awareness about the need for more diverse mental health and the conversation of mental health into the community. Part of different groups and conversations about homelessness prevention and substance abuse prevention, which I think is so important into the community as well. I want to say that I am the person that many times get the phone calls from City Hall when there is a crisis or a need, like this morning, when I got a call about an individual who didn't have clothes and shoes and food, and we were able to get them those resources. And most important, I think that I have been able to work with many, many families who were facing different needs, from housing insecurity to children with special needs, to not knowing how a school department's work, to being an advocate for truancy and discipline needs. So my role has been directly with the families. My role has been definitely working with a lot of the community agencies. And my work has been to working at the state level, telling directly the governor, what do we need in Lin? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Give me one second. So the next question is, immigrant rights are under unprecedented attack from the federal government. The current administration will use every tool available to deport members of immigrant communities, including our police and courts. ICE is terrorizing our city. What will you do to protect residents? I'm going to have, anybody could take this question.
Okay, so obviously Lin is composed of a number of different migrant communities. Right now predominantly Latino, but we also have a very large Kamai, Arab, et cetera. That's one of the biggest assets of our community, and they're part of the folks that power a lot of the culture that we get to live in every single day. Right now, there are a lot of different organizations that are working against there. For example, we have the Luce hotline that was made in part with Neighbor to Neighbor, and they have been advocating for that tirelessly. We've also, as you've seen, they've been working with workers' rights. Right now, we need to continue to amplify that. And particularly at the city council level, it's more so of making laws and regulations that fortify that. If it is something around the type of collaboration that we have with our police departments and ICE, if it is questions about the type of resources that we need to begin investing into, for example, worker visas for immigrants. There's a bunch of things that are being put into question, and we need to start working collaboratively with things that are working, have been working, amplify them, but also create new ideas and collaborate with other, within each other. And particularly create laws, whatever that may be collectively that we decide.
I can go next. I think that my work started in November last year. Definitely communicating with many agencies. I've been working directly with MIRA, with Lawyers for Civil Rights, and definitely with Luce, about how can we get resources into the community. I think that it was extremely important for our community members to get information in their language and actually real information. As we know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. At the beginning, there was a lot of confusion. So we worked together with the Office of the Attorney General, actually getting together the red cards that went to everybody. We were very proactive into getting the red cards into a lot of the nonprofits that were in the community. Another thing that we did is we worked together to develop a lot of the Annoyer Rights trainings that were available not only for individuals but for school departments in addition to community agencies. So I do want to say that there is a lot to do, because what's happening is horrific. I do want to say it, and I consider myself very privileged to know that I can travel, that I can move around, and believe me, I'm walking around with my passport. So if someone who can actually defend herself is horrified, I can't imagine the nightmare that our families are going through, and it's not fair. What is happening, it's a crime, it's illegal, and it's horrific. I became a notary just to support a lot of the families to develop and to have all of their documents together. God forbid something happened to them or to their children. So I do want to say that I've been connecting the families with services that are now going to take advantage of them, but it's actually they're going to receive the services that they deserve. The other part is a lot of males are being deported. So we've been looking for additional resources for the women and the children that are staying here.
I feel like we're at a point... I don't like that we have to ask this question, but we're certainly at a point that we do have to ask this question. And it's unfortunately a fair question to have to ask. And part of what gets said earlier is we are at where we are at the federal level because we need to change things at the local level. And the wording is perfect. Terrorizing. ICE is terrorizing our city. It's true. We've all seen videos, whether it's here, whether it's Worcester, Lowell, New Bedford. We've seen videos right here. And I watch these videos, and I say, this can't be real life. And my kids look at me and they say, Dad, is this, is this happening? And yes, yes, it's happening. Mary Nicholson a while back said, "We are learning now the various ways that we can be most effective in helping people in helping protect our residents against what's going on with ICE." And certainly from a personal standpoint, whatever it is that I can do as part of city council, as part of a resident of the city, as a friend to many people who are immigrants here, whatever it is I could do outside of the city council, I would want to do just because it's the right thing to do. There's got to be better ways to go about doing things. And what is going on right now just simply can't continue. And if part of that change comes from local politics and the local level, if that starts at the city level, then what are we waiting for? Let's start. Let's do that. Let's make our voices heard here so that it can be heard at the state level, so it can be heard at the federal level, so that we can change what is going on as it relates to ICE. And again, the word terrorizing. Perfect wording on the question because it's absolutely terrifying the way that they're going about doing things, and the fact that it's going on can't continue.
Thank you.
En ese caso, el problema de migración es muy grave. Eso es a nivel federal prácticamente.
In this case, the case with immigration is very serious.
Y a nivel local, no tenemos como mucho poder para lidiar con eso.
On a local level, we don't have a lot of power to deal with that. Because families are consumed in terror. Families can't go out to the street. So how do we help those families? Lo que evitó que hemos hecho porque yo he participado cuando comenzó el terror. What I've seen, that we have done, because I've participated, is come together with different coalitions and organizations, looking for a way out, to give resources to the families. Because the problem is at a federal level. So on a local level, it's like a monster. The only way that we can manage that situation is coming together, all of the organizations, all of the coalitions, to look for strategies to be able to help families. Because practically, all these families have been pretty much left on their own without their location. If in their local area, we don't give them the support and help that they need, families are not going to be able to have life because right now, they're locked up.
Es una coalición que...
It's a coalition.
Que a nivel de todo federal y tal local...
That is on every level, federal, state, local.
Es un problema grave.
It's a serious problem. That just on a local level, we can't correct.
Thank you for those answers. Now we're going to go to the next question. Public art in cultural events... Public art and cultural events public art and cultural events bring people together and strengthen civic life. Many communities lack policies that make art accessible in public spaces or that commission local artists for civic projects. If elected, how will you advocate for embedding the arts and cultural policy into city planning, economic development, and yearly budgeting to ensure that local artists are part of the community growth?
So I feel like in Lynn, we've come a long way with this. If we look down here downtown, we can see the beyond walls. We see a lot of those murals. We see a lot of improvements that have been made in that space locally, immediately here. I feel like for a number of years, sports, high school sports, youth sports gets a lot of attention. But not all people are athletic. Despite the fact I'm a hockey coach, not athletic. I was in the drama club when I was in high school. We won't talk about my high school sports career. Again, I was in the drama club. I was in the TV club. There are a lot of things outside of sports that correctly, you know, that don't get the focus that they need. And arts and humanities, arts and sciences, it's certainly a huge part of what can build community, what can build culture. So again, anything, as a candidate, there are certain things that I don't know yet. And I'm never afraid to say, I don't know. But I always follow it up with, I don't know yet. So as for the specifics of what can we do in the city council to change the ways the budget works for community events or arts and community to, I don't know yet. But I know that there are people I can talk to. I'm looking at a few in the audience tonight that would be able to help guide me. But certainly, I would advocate for a variety of arts and cultural events because I do feel it's, I do feel it's important because it helps bring people together in a variety of ways. Whether it's through music, whether it's through art, whether it's through media, whether it's through fun ways to create safe social media. Those are all things that are important ways to drive up community, drive up pride of community, and drive up sense of self-worth, self-worth, sense of community. And it's a good way for everybody collectively to come together. So as far as what can I do, I'm not sure yet, but my time is up.
Thank you for that. Does somebody else want to take it? Okay.
This community is very diverse. And there's a lot of need. In the diversity. There's diversity that's not integrated. And we need to create more opportunities. Multiculturals for different cultures. Because there are cultures that in reality are not represented. What I've always heard is there's no funds. And I've always heard that resources are limited. That if a child of low means wants to do a painting course, the spaces are limited. I would like to see that change. I would like there to be more opportunity for multicultural. To have more opportunity in different cultures. Definitely.
I do want to stay in that line. I think that when you come to Lynn and you see the murals and the painting and the music and everything that happens over the weekend, it's very exciting to see the kids dancing and the parents painting with them. I know last week, I walked into Rural Arts, and they have like this beautiful table, and it was so cool to see parents and children just creating, right? I think that art, music gives you the ability to be who you are. And for many kids and for many youth and young children, that is the way to express who they are. So I think that we can do so much through music and through arts. I do come from a city that was hit with violence and drugs and brokenness for many, many years. And now going back and see a beautiful city embracing who they are through culture is so amazing and is so beautiful. And I think that we are getting there. So I feel that it's our responsibility as not only city council, but as people from the city, as leaders, from community members, to see what else can we bring, right? I feel that we should have more opportunities for grant writing. I think that community agents should be working together into getting more funding and to be more creative and more strategic. I'm one of those people who I don't like to wait for someone else to do it for me. But I would love to work and to participate with the city council and with the community agencies to bring money. Yes, we need money, but at the same time, we need to know where to ask and how to ask in order to be more proactive and more supportive. Thank you.
When you think about projects like public art environment, there are these things that are engraved into our community, but sometimes when you're communicating to other stakeholders, it kind of leaves the pages. So I think as a city council, it's really important to notice how these things can be integrated into other assets. For example, we all know in Lynn, there's a huge issue around public safety, around job force development, et cetera. However, there's also a very strong community of artists. And unlike in other communities where we think about like, oh, there's a new mural, that's probably gentrification because these artists are coming into these low-income communities. This is a unique opportunity in the sense that Lynn is composed of a lot of artists. It's not people coming in, it's who we are in one way or another. So when we consider these projects that are coming along, and I guess I'll name some, or when I don't, I don't know if I should. Well, basically, there's this very well-known art institution in Lynn that recently got a number of grants to work in Central Lynn. And the incentive is essentially to open up public space and create safety around the community. These are ways in which we can access more funding, combat other existing bigger issues where folks that aren't really into these artsy or, you know, existential things that they might come across as, and develop our community in very big ways. So I think it's, part of it is changing the rhetoric and seeing how we can integrate these issues that we know exist and bring the people and the talent that's already in here to amplify this.
Thank you for that. We're gonna move on to the next question. I'm going to skip over a question. I know they wanted me to ask all the questions, but this is about arts too. So I'm gonna ask this question. Public schools often cut or underfund arts education, even though studies show it is vital for student development, civic engagement, and community identity. Artists play a key role in mentoring and inspiring the next generation. How would you support expanding public investment in arts education programs in schools and after-school spaces? Don't all jump at once.
That's very important. The development of children. I would try to create something, like a fund, or something to develop those programs because it's very important to develop the children. That is what's most important. The education. Because if we don't prepare our children for life for the world, it's like if you throw them onto the world with nothing. And that is the most important thing. We need to find a way to create funds for those programs. If they keep doing cuts for any reason, they need to find ways to create funds for these programs that are. But so those programs don't go away because they are very important for the education of the children. That's their development. Definitely. Yes.
I think that the question is if I will support expanding public investment for arts? Absolutely. Like, that is like no-brainer. I think that we, the more we have, the better. Especially after school programs are so needed. Those are safest spaces for kids to go and connect with other children, with youth, to be creative, to use their language, to grow together and to expand. So yes, absolutely, I will support something like that.
I agree. I can't find somebody that wouldn't support something like the arts. It's vitally important. Money is what it is, right? The budgets are what they are. But there's ways to advocate for balancing those budgets so that you tip the scales towards arts, to expand the ability to have more for the drama clubs. More for both the high school and middle school levels have drama festivals that they're able to go to. There's a cost to that. So it's about trying to advocate for money in the budget to go towards those programs. It's also about locally, you know, whether, locally to see if there are, might be teachers in the schools that are willing to volunteer some of their time. There might be other students in the schools at the high school level that could mentor middle school programs. Utilizing the resources and the people that we have together collectively that would be interested in the arts, and there are many of them. It's absolutely never a mistake to advocate for the expansion of those type of programs.
Oftentimes, when I hear of like, let's expand arts, there's always this like connection to workforce development. Like, okay, yeah, we need to create more like computer science engineers or like other architects, et cetera. And yes, there is a correlation between thinking about things in a different way, being able to create a product that doesn't exist. But I think there is also just a need to express, explore, and really like to send many what is happening around you in the world. And art is a beautiful way to do that. I think there have been a lot of organizations in Lynn that have provided these resources. And there is, there are so many people that still don't qualify for these programs, be it that they don't necessarily, there might be kids that are homeless or that can't qualify to sign up for these programs. So I think there is a need to, not only should we expand these programs because they work, but because there are people who would benefit tremendously from them and haven't had the opportunity to. So expand funding, but also rethink about the way that it's being spent and created.
Thank you for that. There's a rent stabilization legislation pending in the State House and a proposed ballot question on rent stabilization. Both proposals would limit annual rent increases to match increases in the cost of living with a cap at 5%. Both proposals would exempt owner-occupied properties with four units or less. And both proposals would exempt newly constructed housing for several years after it is completed. The legislation in the State House would give cities and towns the option of adopting rent stabilization at the local level. The proposed ballot question would create statewide rent stabilization across Massachusetts. Will you support rent stabilization legislation and the rent stabilization ballot question? If yes, how would you use your platform as city councilor to further this effort for rent control?
So I think part of affordable housing and part of rent stabilization, rent control. Affordable housing doesn't have to be just a place that you can afford to live because you have to live. I'd like to see affordable housing be a place that people want to live because that's where it begins. That's where pride and community begins. If you're living in a place that you feel in your heart is home, you're going to keep up the area. You're going to make sure that your trash is cleaned up. You're gonna make sure that the entire community around you is clean, welcoming, nice. And so rent stabilization and affordable housing plays a large part of that in a city like Lynn where we've got a diverse amount of incomes, from high income, moderate income, low income. And those incomes working and living together peacefully together, it's important. We can't just have people that are in affordable housing that say, well, I'm living here because I have to. I can't afford anyplace else. I'm here for now. I don't want anybody here for now. I want people here forever. I want people proud to be where they're from. I want people happy with their homes, right? And landlords, and especially, I know we talked about, this talks about how owner-occupied properties with four units or less and then larger properties. Landlords are obviously in a business. But their business is not a product. Their business is human beings. And human beings deserve the right to have a home and a home that they can afford. My time is almost up. I just can't, I can't state it enough. Pride of community creates so much more positivity than we realize. And if it starts with affordable housing, yes, let's go.
Okay, so clearly, cost of living is going up a lot. But what's not changing are wages. And that's something that we have to very well consider. If our wages aren't changing exponentially, then neither should our rents because there's no way that we could keep up. So obviously, the city has been doing a lot in regards to creating more affordable housing and passing more legislation to support that. I think that this makes it more feasible for families who are being met with $200 a month rent increases for houses that are often kept up by absentee landlords that aren't, don't have the resources that they need. Because sometimes, yes, you do have a rent increase of $200, but your sink is still not working. You're coming across other life situations in which you're, you have competing expectations. So I feel a law like this would help alleviate some of those burdens and reinvest into some of those community values that we need, be it having more discretionary funding to invest in your community, in local businesses, to create community and enjoy time with friends and family. And those are really the things that matter as well.
Well, I do want to echo what both Cordellis and Josh just said. At the beginning, I mentioned that I'm one of those tenants that many years ago, we had to deal with a rent increase. I was not living in this city, but I was living in a nearby city. And when I went to sign my lease, my rent increase was $800. So just think about that. We were like, what the hell are we gonna do, right? So as a couple, we needed to cut in a lot of the expenses, get rid of one of the cars. And we saw a lot of our neighbors moving out, especially those elderly, especially a lot of the single parents. And that time, we managed to, we don't even know how we managed, but we did. A year after, we were going to sign our lease again, and the increase was an additional $900. So that's when we were like, how are we gonna do that? So we ended up taking our 401K and we were able to buy our first home, which it was a blessing, right? But not everybody can do that. We were extremely blessed to be able to have that amount of money there and to have the resources and information in doing it. It's horrific. It's horrific to have to leave your home because the new owner wants to see, wants to increase a business, right? So it was not about the tenants, it was not about who was there. So when I speak about this, of course, it goes very deep into my heart because we went through it and we saw a lot of people that we really care about that. So I do understand. I would love to find additional solutions, like everybody else. I think that at a local level, we need to find for what can we do? I know that at the state level, we are waiting for answers. We're desperate. I know that I attended the United for Change meeting. I know that I attended the United for Change meeting, and when the state legislation was there and they gave their opinion about what can be done and what cannot be done, what else can we do? Can, how can we, I don't know, support good landlords? I remember that there was a very good landlord there that day talking about how he cares. So what can we do for those good landlords that actually care for their tenants, for those that are keeping their properties in a decent manner? So I would like to explore, yes, at the state level, what can we do, but at a local level, what can we do together with the mayor and the city council to create additional support for the Lynn residents?
Well, that is a constant battle. David against Goliath. In 2008, I met a lot of families that lost their homes. Thirty years of work. And still, to this day, we're in that fight constantly. Because the powerful people do certain things. But we do other things. And then they do another thing. And it's a constant battle. We have to grab the bull by the horns, as they say. And put law, strong laws. Because the tenants are suffering. And they don't have that support. I'm a fighter for years. In that case of... I've been working for years in affordable housing, and we're working in a law that... The bill is in the State House. And it's to see if we can do an office for tenants. Where we can defend the rights of the tenants. Because, in reality, the property owners are abusing. Definitely. It's a constant battle. Definitely, yeah.
Thank you for that. I do wanna let the audience know, if you guys have those little papers to write questions on, please keep those questions coming. We did pick one question to ask tonight, but the rest of the questions will be given to the candidates, and they'll be able to respond to you directly. They have, they'll have your email and your phone number if you wrote it on the paper. But if you have those little papers, keep writing your questions. If you need one, raise your hand and somebody will be able to bring it to you. The last question for the night is, and we're gonna go in order when answering this, so we'll start with Agustina, then Cordellis, then Josh, and then Liliana. So the final question is, why should the people of Ward 5 vote for you?
Well, I, the only thing is, I am a community activist. And I'm interested in the problems of the community. I'm interested in my community advancing. I would love for you to consider me. Because I've been living in this community for 22 years. Integrated in all of the issues of our community, all of the problems that have affected our community, political, economic, social, health. All of the problems where we can represent our community. Specifically. Agustina will be there. Definitely. For my community.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So, as a person that's lived multiple phases of my life in Lynn and hope to live further here, I think it's important to have perspectives of things that younger folks are going through. And also, I think that my ability to think creatively about issues, but also my relationships with different people within the community, be it different organizations, people have allotted me with varied perspective and the ability to know about what resources we have and how to combine them effectively. So, I hope to use that, but also continue to grow, use some of the more academic ventures that I'm currently pursuing to enhance that as well, drawing from other organizations that are near us, like Boston, et cetera, who often wanna pilot a lot of different programs. And I think there's an opportunity for us to deal with some of the problems that came up today, but others that really do need our attention, like our homeless population, our, and the lack of resources that are in this community. There are a lot in other places. We just need to know how to communicate it, get it together, and help each other out, because we're already doing it, we just need a little bit more support and organization around it.
That's why people should vote for me. I, as a councilor, will always, I can promise this, I'll always lead the residents of Ward 5 and be a city leader who conducts himself with honor, integrity, transparency, and honesty. Hundred percent of the time. Also, accessibility. I feel as though if you are not accessible, especially as a ward councilor, you'll be totally ineffective. You need to be accessible to your residents. You need to be able to answer that phone when it rings, you need to be able to jump onto emails, you need to be able to be accessible because Ward 5 specifically makes up a ton of Lynn. It makes up businesses, schools, residents. We've got all parts of economic development, all parts of the economy throughout Ward 5. We have residents from multiple backgrounds. For me, every resident has a unique need. Every resident's voice is unique. And I wanna lead every resident of Ward 5, not just some of the residents. I wanna be the voice in City Hall for everybody. And I can promise that I'll always do it to the best of my ability, in the most honorable, honest, and integrity way possible. I'm never afraid to say, "I don't know," but I do follow it up with, "I don't know yet." I'm also a person that will never just do what's easy to do it, I will always do what's right for everybody.
Last but not least, right? So, I've been doing this for years, and I think that my personal experience, my working experience, what I have learned from the community has prepared me to some degree to be here. And I think that those skills allow me to, if you vote for me, to be there at City Hall fighting for you. This is not only about my fight, this is about your fight. And as I said it on Monday, I think that you have to be very thoughtful about who is going to be your voice. And I think that today, you saw four candidates, and it's really up to you to decide who really represents me, who has the values, who has the strength, who's going to advocate, who's going to agree to disagree, and who's going to be the warrior, be the one that is gonna say, "No, that's not what my community needs." I wanna say it one more time, Ward 5 is not only Pine Hills. Ward 5 is extremely diverse, and whoever is there needs to understand that everything that is happening in Ward 5 is affecting the whole community. Whoever is there needs to understand that there are issues with housing, with food insecurity, with substance abuse, with mental health, that we have veterans that cannot pay the rent, and we have elderly looking for resources. So whoever is there fighting for you needs to understand how systems work, need to know where to go when someone in their community needs support. As I mentioned, I have two boys, and I always say to my boys, "There's nothing better than going to sleep knowing that you did the right thing." And that's what I, that is the first thing that I think about when I go to sleep at the end of the day, "Did I do the right thing?" And most of the time is, "Yes." So, thank you one more time for allowing us to share who we are with all of you, and your time is precious, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We just have one more question from the audience. So the homeless situation is getting worse in Lynn. What will you do to help serve the homeless problem in Ward 5 and the city of Lynn? And this question is for everybody. So we'll start with Agustina again.
Well, like, all things. Come together with the community, with the problem itself. Together with the community, trying to find solutions to the problem. Because if we are the voice for the community, then we have to look for solutions together. One councilor is just one, district, in the council. The decision isn't for just one person. We have to make a consensus. So it would be to do a consensus with colleagues, with the community. And to try to resolve the problem the best, the best way possible. All of us together, because the problem doesn't just belong to one. To seek help with different coalitions. Where they're dealing with the same problem, or they've gone through the similar situation. All hands on deck, everybody working together.
I think homelessness that we're experiencing in the city is not unique to Lynn. It is a global problem, quite frankly. There are a lot of communities battling with how to solve it. Over the past couple weeks, I've been very interested to know more about what's currently happening within the city, what organizations, and what I've found is that there is, there are resources. For example, we have a continuum of care, we have a systems of care, and there are people gathering, thinking about these problems. But what I've also come to understand is that there are a lot of gaps between how these programs work together. And that can come from, let's say, we have a program for youth who are formerly homeless. Well, those people can't enroll into these programs, even if they are just going house to house, they have to physically be in a shelter or on the streets. And that is honestly unacceptable. Like, if people need help, you don't have to verify this by living the worst experiences. We have to, well, for me, it's really important to continue digging into these issues, learning about the people who are experiencing this, because it's not a standalone problem. I think 50% of Americans are a paycheck away from homelessness. So, we really need to consider what are these external problems that are creating this? And obviously, housing plays a big role, but the solutions are many, and the ones that we have have really big gaps. So I think it's really about figuring out what resources are there, how do we put them together and continue collaborating with each other.
So at the city level, we need to work collaboratively with the state. And at the state level, we need to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the federal level to ensure that there's money, to ensure that there's funding, in order to help house homeless people. It's not just homeless people, aren't just one person here, one person, one guy here, one woman here. There are families, there are children, there are elderly, there are veterans, there are many homeless people. And as Cordellis said, not just in Lynn, it's not a unique problem to Lynn, but we are in Lynn. And we wanna take care of our people in Lynn as best we can. And collaborative efforts, all the way up, collaborative efforts with the state, and have the state level collaboratively work with the federal level to ensure that we have programs, we have funding filtered into the city of Lynn. If we're able to build affordable housing, we're also able to build housing for everybody. Nobody should be in the middle of the street, nobody should be on a street corner, on a curb, in February, in the middle of a blizzard, without a place to go, without a warm, safe place to be. And whatever we can do, we certainly should do in order to help that.
I want to assume that the question is related to the unhoused population on downtown. Because if you're gonna talk about homelessness, it would be like a whole conversation, but I really wanna focus just about the unhoused population and the common area. And if we think about a lot of individuals that are there, we have to think that most of them have mental health needs and substance abuse treatment. And in order for us to address those needs, we need to say out loud, "We need support." So we need experts to come and help us to do the work. This idea that we can just put a dumpster and a sign and homeless individuals are going to clean by themselves, it's like asking your toddler to cook dinner for you. That's not gonna happen. So what we need to do is see what other communities have done, what Boston has done, what Springfield has done, and take some of those ideas and communicate with those experts to see what can we do. I know that currently, that is something that is happening. I'm actually part of many of those meetings that are happening between the city, the Health Department, and some of the agencies in the community, where we are looking for resources, we're looking for funding, we are being communicating directly with the mayor on what are the options that we have for permanent solutions. Something that we see is that many times, we clean one of the areas in the city, and then there's another encampment in another area, and then they are gone during the winter because it's very cold, right? And then in the, in the summer, they come out. We need a permanent solution, because all of these individuals, they need and deserve treatment. They need and deserve support. When you are sick, you need medicine and you need support. That is exactly the same treatment that we need to do. It's not only housing, it's substance abuse prevention, it's counseling, and other needs that they might have.
Thank you for that. I do wanna ask her, we just remain seated, we have one last something that's going on. We have a performance by Sean McCarthy. Everybody put your hands together, thank you.
Sean McCarthy, I'm a longtime Lynn resident, born and raised. I found this place a few months ago, and I can tell you firsthand what it means for the Lynn arts and the community, what it does for the city. Brings everyone together. Michelle here started this off with some great words, and I instantly knew what song of mine I was gonna play for you guys. It's short, it's sweet, I know you wanna get out of here, but it's, it's pretty fitting. What's the meaning of evil? Not giving a [bleep] about other people, never seen each other as equal. What's the meaning of evil? What's the meaning of evil? And not giving a [bleep] about other people, never seen each other as equal. What's the meaning of evil? It's Tuesday at 2:00 and I'm drinking Jack Daniels. I'm thinking why I didn't buy a second handle, and why life's gotta be so hard when you try so damn hard. I'm just looking for a little bit of purpose in a way to fill my family's purses. Don't take much for me to be happy, as long as I know that you're all happy. What's the meaning of evil? And not giving a [bleep] about other people, never seen each other as equal. What's the meaning of evil? Sorry, that's not the greatest vocabulary, but thank you.
Sometimes you gotta say what you gotta say, baby.
Thank you all for coming. That's going to conclude our Ward 5 candidate forum, but Michelle does wanna say something, so...
I wanna say one last thing. You have four people. You have four people, and you all know I like to talk a lot, right? Right? So, I know these four. You have four opportunities. I want you to leave here with a decision, okay? You have a woman that despite a language barrier, is here willing to represent you and your needs and your community. You have somebody that has proven to you that she's not going to stop at a barrier to serve you, okay? You have a young woman that is bringing to you a young voice, young thoughts, young ideas, young spirit. We have too many gray hairs in office. Right? So, you have, this is an opportunity. You have somebody that was born and raised in this city, and from a young person that can still remember what it feels like to be a young person needing, wanting, dreaming, being told no, you have somebody here that remembers freshly what that is. You have a man, first of all, as a coach and a mother. I have four sons, six grandsons, and a granddaughter. You have somebody that has dedicated himself to make sure that children have a place to go and have fun and learn sportsmanship, and learn how to be in camaraderie, and learn how to be athletes and not animals. You have a person that's here teaching children every day in different sports and different mediums, how to love themselves, be proud of themselves, despite whether they win or lose, because in life, we win and lose, right? So, you have that. And then you have a woman that has shown you and proven to you through who she is and what she's done in our community, that she does not give up, that she does not stop, that she does not let limitations stop her. She learned a new language, and she's here speaking perfect English to you. So, she's shown you that she can overcome. Everybody at this table has overcome something. Everybody at this table has broken through something. Everybody at this table has gone through a day when they did not want to get up, but they got up anyways because they did not have a choice. So, everybody at this table can represent you in a very different and unique way, and they, each and all of them, have an honest opportunity to serve you from an honest place. I have been in this city, and I am glad you're here. That's my ward counselor. Raise your hand, because I'm going to talk some smack about you. For me, I've lived in different communities. I've lived in Salem, I've lived in Peabody, I've lived in Lawrence, I was heavily involved in Lawrence, and I know what representation looks like. I know what it looks like to have a councilperson that really cares. And where's Sean? Gives a fuck. Okay? I've seen this man at 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, driving around with his husband, making sure that if he finds a parking spot for somebody that doesn't have a place to park in the snow, they find it. He's on Facebook Live with his husband, driving around in the snow. I've seen him do that. That's my ward counselor. I voted for him every time. So, look to people like Coco, look to people like Nicole McLean, that have shown and proven through their work and dedication to the community, how it is to serve a community that you love. When somebody loves the community that they work for, they show it. Pay attention. Pay attention. And these four, if their faces are not familiar, maybe it's because you're not in the certain places or in the right places, but I've seen all of them in a lot of different places. They show up. And they don't show up for a photo op. And I got to say this, because I'm always talking about the selfies and the photo ops, I'm not talking about my Coco. Because I'm in 80% of his pictures on his page. I'm talking about the people that are opportunistic, that show up for a show. And then, when it's time to get your hands dirty, they disappear. I've seen my counselor pick up trash, I've seen my counselor take out things out of the way that are obstructing people, I've seen my counselor fight for our city. You need to make sure that whoever you choose has already shown who, shown you who they are. Because people are going to try to tell you who they are these next few months. Listen to how they represent themselves when nobody's looking. Listen to how they act when the cameras aren't rolling. Watch, observe. Lynn Community Television has lots of video footage that you can look at. Cardellis mentioned, and, and, and everybody here, you mentioned a lot of stats, things that happened in the past, how things were voted into office, how things were given from office. The LCTV has the videos, so you can run it back and check body language, check tone, see who's sweating, see who's happy. Take note, because we're dying right now for lack of unity, for lack of love, for lack of coming together. There's way, New Lynn Coalition can tell you how many coalitions we have. New Lynn Coalition can tell you how many organizations we have in the city. They're not talking to each other. They're not. That's part of the problem. We, as constituents of the city, have a right, and we deserve to call for action, to call for unity, and to make sure we make the right choice. Whatever choice you make, you're making a good one. These are four good people. But make your choice, make sure that they're going to represent you. I've given you my run of who they are. I'm sure that each of you knows somebody that knows one of them. Ask questions. Before you cast your vote, make sure that the person that you're choosing loves their community. And I'm talking about Ward Five right now, but I'm also talking about counselors at large. I'm talking about state representatives, I'm talking about every level of community leadership that we're looking at voting into office now. They've shown you who they are. Believe them.